Called the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, September 26, 2023 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman-at-Large Melbow and Moran Jr. will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm a little nervous around my care everyone and I am attending remotely due to health concerns.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Gueye.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donchess and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you very much. First, I wanted to address R. 23152, which is a resolution that I know all of you, I believe, support, and thank you for that. The resolution would dedicate eight million dollars of the surplus from last fiscal year to tax rate reduction. And once you pass this, which I believe you clearly will, then the end result will be able to achieve a tax rate that increases somewhere a little bit less than 2 percent, less than half the rate of inflation. And I want to thank the entire Board of Aldermen for their support of a budget this year, which I consider to be lean, but which also meets the service needs that our citizens expect. So this is a joint team effort. Everyone is involved to achieve a tax rate that is lower than the rate of inflation. Because I know, I understand, and I know you all feel the same, that last year was a very tough year for homeowners because of the revaluation, state mandated, I will mention again, because it did push up homeowners' property taxes. Homes went up so much in value, commercial property did not, so the revaluation had the effect of pushing the tax burden towards the homes. And I believe this year, in trying to achieve a low tax rate, we certainly have that in mind, and we want to make people's family budgets as easy as we possibly can. Next, Madam President, I did want to mention that Main Street is going to be, has already has received one level of pavement, one layer of pavement, and will be receiving, or the final layer will be applied, assuming weather permits, by Continental Paving on Saturday, July, Saturday, September 30, this coming Saturday. And then, of course, lines and the like will be painted on after that. Also on Main Street, you noticed, I'm sure, over Sunday into Monday, that the railroad, CSX now, rather than the previous owner, CSX repaired the Main Street crossing of the rail line that runs parallel to Canal Street. That was a long time in coming. Thank you, Trish Clea, for working on the railroad to be responsive on that issue, and I think that will just make people's lives a little bit easier. Next, Public Works did want me to mention that there's a hazardous waste collection day coming up next, a week from Saturday, October 7. The location for that has been changed from the Crown Street parking lot to the Public Works facility on Riverside Drive. So everything is the same, except for the location has been changed. I wanted to mention briefly, Madam President, that we cut the ribbon on St. Andrews Park today for the new playground. Thank you to the Aldermen who were particularly involved, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan in this Board of Aldermen, and in the previous Board, Alderman Harriet Gathwright. But you may hear a little bit more from them about that. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention the passing of Barry Palmer. He was a long, long time Nashville resident. He had been a reporter for the Union Leader and WSMN. He was a veteran. He served in the Army for a number of years. He was on the Human Rights Commission in the, at the state level for quite a while. He was head of the VFW and the American Legion at different times. And during the course of his long residence in Nashville was a, he was a state rep, I don't know if I mentioned that, for a couple of terms for Ward 5. And during his tenure, his long residence in the city, he was a big contributor to the life of Nashville. So I wanted to give my best to his wife and his family and extend at least my condolences to them. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Responses to the remarks by Mayor on this side? Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to add to the, as the mayor said, the first coat of paving had been put on Main Street. And it was pointed out to me that not all the stripes line up, so I did check with the Director of Public Works, and she said that that's just because, obviously, we can't just leave no striping on Main Street for a week and a half. So, yes, the crosswalk over by High Street, for example, doesn't exactly line up the right way. You can still use the crosswalks, the bump outs are still there, but it's sort of temporary paint. And then, once they fully pave it, they'll do the much more careful and aligned job.
Anyone else? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two quick responses. First one, you know, everybody here passed the budget, and I think to get to this point where we have minimal increase is pretty amazing considering how many cities and towns have to go at least at the rate of inflation or above. And I think, you know, hand it to all the city employees who worked so hard to get their budgets down, so we're able to pass a responsible budget that allowed us to do this, and thanks to everybody here that voted yes on it. And then, St. Andrews Park, I was able to be one of the Aldermen that was able to attend that this afternoon, and, you know, it's close to Ward 8. It's probably one of the parks that Ward 8 will go to most outside of Robey Park. So, you know, it was great to be able to see the work that was done and be able to be there. And for all nine Ward representation to be there, the Aldermen, and then certainly the three state reps, including State Rep. Marty Jack. So thank you for coming to that and being part of that event.
What's that? Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of January 10th, September 13th, 2023, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Sam Durfee, Planning Director, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on a petition for waiver of school impact fees for Covington Place, a condominium community, 2-21 Sutton Way.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Without objection, I'd like to suspend the rules to allow for a communication that was received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication has been received from Dan Healy, City Clerk, regarding results of the September 12, 2023 mayoral primary election for the city of Nashville.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relatives to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I wanted to talk a little bit about the use of escrow money to offset the tax rate. I expressed some concerns last year with this. And I think my issue is, you know, I just heard Derek say, "We do such a terrific job with the budget, and it's also low." But what we're doing is creating a lot of escrow accounts in this city. We have many, many of them, and we're talking money in these escrow accounts, and we're leaving it in there unspent, millions of dollars. There's another account that we just looked at, Ms. Calhoun and I, that has $12 million sitting in it. So I don't think we should be patting ourselves on the back because we have strong fiscal management and tight budget controls that are keeping our tax rate low. I think we're misusing public funds by allowing these escrow accounts to exist and all of that money to stay stuck in there. If you look at that, last year, we gave, this is the graph, for six years of our escrows and money back, we gave 4,000 back and kept over $7,000 in there to use for some pet projects and have you, you know, vote on things you wanted to do. Last year was the tough year, when we should have given the 8,000 or 9,000 back, but we didn't do that. And I think we didn't do it because it wasn't an election year. So I think what we see going on here is partisan politics at its best. The mayor is going to do what he needs to do to look good, to keep that tax rate low.
That's not, that's not part of our discussion, what the mayor is doing.
Excuse me, this is open public comment. For me to speak, you are violating my constitutional rights. I want my time back. Do not interrupt me if I offer a criticism to this mayor. It is wrong. Now, what the mayor is doing is partisan politics here. And you can see that all of a sudden, the blue line of what we're giving back is huge this year.
One minute.
Not what we get, and in 2019, when he was running, we didn't give that much back because there was no one running against him. There was no incentive to do it. So I think we need to manage our escrow accounts much better. And I think we have to stop having 11, 12, 15, 20 million dollars in these accounts that we can play with to give little tidbits back at the end of the budget season to make ourselves look good. Other seasons are doing this. Other, other towns are not doing this because they don't hold that kind of money. So I think it's really important that we manage our finances better because what I think it represents is a real misuse of public funds, and I hope this board starts addressing those escrow accounts and what's in them and how we're moving the money through them. Thank you very much for your time.
Communications requiring final approval.
None.
Petitions.
Petition for waiver of school impact fees, Covington Place, a condominium community, 2-21 Sutton Way.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make the motion to grant the petition for waiver of school impact fees for Covington Place, a condominium, condominium community at 221 Sutton Way by roll call. Briefly speak to it.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. This came to the PDC Committee regarding a senior living community that's being built over off of, oh.
Of Concord Street.
Concord Street, thank you. But it's only impact fees related to capital improvements of schools. The typical base rate of the school contributions will continue to be there. This is just for capital improvements.
You've heard the motion? Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Roll call. My bad.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yep.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and the petition for waiver of school impact fees is granted. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Airport Authority, Brian H. Law, reappointment, term to expire August 31st, 2028, 78 Concord Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03063.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment by the mayor is read and referred to the Personnel and Ministry of Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the September 7th and September 14th, 2023 Budget Review Committees, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the September 6th and 20th, 2023 Finance Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the September 18th, 2023 Human Affairs Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the September 19th, 2023 Planning and Economic Development Committee, be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-23-152, establishing the use of fund balance for tax rate.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 23152 by roll call.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23152 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-153, relative to the acceptance of up to 425,000 from the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant Program.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 23153 relative to the acceptance of up to 425,000 dollars from the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant Program.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23153 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-156, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Years 2021 through 2025 to amend Round 4 CDBG-CV funding under the 2020 CARES Act.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R. 23-156 by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Motion carries, Resolution 23156 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
None.
New business resolutions.
First reading of R-23-157, relative to the acceptance of grants, grant funds in the amount of 1,054,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Service Services into various public health and community services grant activities.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
Alderman Wiltshire, did you say me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not. Alderman Kelly, Alderwoman Kelly. Thank you.
First reading of R-23-158, relative to the acceptance of 331,539 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA-operating grant.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-23-159, relative to the acceptance of 110,000 from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance into police grant activity fiscal year 2024 hazardous device unit equipment grant.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-23-160, relative to the transfer of 150,000 from Department Number 194, contingency account number 70125, contingency cybersecurity into various accounts in Department Number 122, information technology, and Department Number 191, education.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Kelly.
First reading of R-23-161, relative to the acceptance of additional grant funds pursuant to Contract Amendment Number 4 of the fiscal year 2024 infectious disease contract in the amount of 10,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services for the purchase of vaccines.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-23-162, relative to the reappropriation of fiscal year 2024 escrows.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Thursday, October 19th, 2023, at 7:00 PM here in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-23-163, authorizing city to grant an easement to public service of New Hampshire, DVA, EverSource Energy for Tax Map 43, Lot 105 and Lot 106.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure on the Planning Board.
First reading of R-23-164, authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at 1 Edward Street.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-23-060, authorizing free holiday parking at meters in Zone 3, which includes the Elm Street and High Street parking garages from December 11th, 2023 through January 1st, 2024.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O-23-061, authorizing traffic changes on Woodward Avenue.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran. Given its first reading, I will sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Engineering Department. Period for public comment. I have two people that have signed up. Charlie Sherman. Come right up to the mic, give your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes, okay? Thank you.
My name is Charlie Sherman. I live at 24 Mindy Place, which is right off of Arrow Drive, a stone's throw from Route 3. I come to you tonight with a plea for your support and guidance in building a sound wall between milepost 6.8 and 7.6, not the entire 7 to 8 stretch. Because residents there have expressed to me their dissatisfaction with the amount of noise that goes on, especially when motorcycles are racing from exit 7 to exit 8 and making a terrible racket. And there's also semis downshifting. And I can't express this to you strongly enough, but it's almost hard to envision and imagine what impact that has on a person, persons, without being there. And I live very close, and so I'm asking for your help and guidance in influencing the Department of Transportation for the building of a sound wall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. You know, I've raised some concerns with Aldermen about our accounting systems and how we handle our money in our escrow accounts. But I want to raise another concern tonight regarding a $7.1 million loan that we gave from the city of Nashville to one of the 201 Corps that we formed to do the Art Center. It was the Financing Corp., and it was a very secretive kind of loan. The documentation on it was not well noted on the drawings and what was done with this money. And it took some of us a long time to figure out what was going on, but it turned out it was a loan with loan documents that was kept outside of the closing binder when we did the Art Center project. And it was given from the city to 201 Main Street Financing, I think on a 30-year term, maturity 2050, with a 1% interest rate, so interest-only payment for 70 years of $71,000. The loan, for unknown reasons, was never recorded in the city books. And that is a case of financial fraud and mismanagement. Where it really glares out is that the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is done yearly, except we have not done the report for 2022, and there is no reasons given why we haven't done that audit. But if you look at the report for the year 1920 and '21, there is on page 51 a section that said loans. "The Economic Development Office administers loan programs that provide working capital and capital asset financing for startup and existing businesses in the Nashville area. The city records a receivable for the principal amount of the loan issued." We did not do that, and that loan was passed right through the economic development project page. It was in the economic development account when it was moved out. So the question is, why didn't we do it?
One minute.
Well, Mr. Griffin was sending emails right after the December closing and in March, asking Celia Leonard and Director Cummings, "Do we have any loans that need to be recorded on the city financials?" And it doesn't appear that they provided him with the loan documents. There's no record of it. They did a Zoom meeting instead. And after a lot of investigation- And after a lot of investigation, primarily with Ms. Calhoun, because she has an extensive finance background, she determined that the loan wasn't there. And after, you know, twenty-nine months, in August, they recorded the loan on the books in the May trial balance, which is on the sheets that we have here. I'm going to encourage this board to really pay attention to our documentation in our finance office, and I'd like somebody to find out for me why we haven't done the annual audit for twenty twenty-two. We're going on six quarters behind with no audit of our books. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board. I'm going to start over here tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. To the gentleman that spoke with the sound barriers, if he wants to stay till after the meeting, the other hat I wear is a state representative. And if you look in the first bench to your right is the clerk of Public Works and Highways, the good Representative Marty Jack, who would probably just would come under his particular committee. So if you can give us a few minutes afterwards, we might be able to give you some advice on, you know, where to throw the dart at on the board. But as it sits right now, I do not think it's a municipal responsibility. Those roads are owned by the state DOT. So I think you have legitimate concerns. But however, you're in the wrong format. I think maybe it may need to reply to the state DOT. So we'll go from there, and we're happy to advise you. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. I wanted to take an opportunity. This evening before the meeting tonight, I stepped out to walk the dogs. And up the road from me was a nice couple that just moved into Ward Nine. They moved here from Woburn, Mass. And I took the opportunity to say hi, and his name was Mark, her name was, I hope she's not watching because I can't remember it. But the daughter's name was Gianna, six months old. And I just took the opportunity to document a little bit what it's like for first-time homebuyers to enter into a market like Nashua where our inventory is pretty strained. And the anxiety that they had because they couldn't have a home inspection because that's just the market. Nobody gets a home inspection anymore. They have to, they took a tour with a builder friend to walk them through the house. The amount of money that they had to put down, the amount of rejection that they had to face before they settle on this house is really, obviously, I'm happy that we have new family coming into Nashua, coming into the ward. But it was just an interesting conversation to see what young folks today are facing in this, in this economy. So thanks.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple of things that are real quick. I wanted to congratulate Nashua South and Nashua North for making the top twenty-five high schools within New Hampshire. Nashua South made twelve, and Nashua North made twenty-four. And this includes charter schools as well as the, what we would consider the normal public schools as well. So congratulations to them and their staff and teachers and so on. For the last time, I'm not going to promise because I never make a promise that I'm not sure I can keep. But I want to thank everybody for all of the hard work they did to, including CSX, to make that Main Street project complete. I did have someone who called and said there was a little lip on the north side when you come over. And I did reach out to Engineer Hudson, and he said that the rest of Main Street from that point on, within the next couple of years, will be paved, and that will be taken care of. It's a small little one compared to the jar, jarring that we had. But once again, I would like to also give a shout out to Joanne St. John, who helped me reach out to Senator Shaheen's office on another matter with CSX. And then we took the opportunity, and I say "we" because with the mayor, through the mayor's encouragement as well as Director Sullivan, Director Cummings, and engineering, including senior engineer Dan Hudson, we were all able to make it happen. And I do want to give a special thanks to Mr. Hudson. He was incredible keeping the Jackson Falls people abreast of everything that was happening. And Director Cummings worked really hard to make sure that they had the parking as well. And then I'd like to set two things straight in the record. There's a document going around that's saying that Ward Three was the one who carried the Performing Arts Center in the election and so on. While I appreciate the kudos of Ward Three, that's not truly the case. It did pass by a slim margin, but it passed. And we don't have like an electric college, electric college to do this, so it was the entire city that voted. And it was a small turnout. But, and as part of that document that's going on, they say that Ward Three voted so strongly for it because the Center for the Arts is in Ward Three. And I know we do some gerrymandering, but just for the record, the Center for the Arts is in Ward Four. Ward Three has not adopted the downtown Main Street, at least not that part of it. So, and then in comment to the seven point one million dollar loan that keeps being put forward and making it sound like it's above and beyond that twenty twenty bond, it is not, is within the twenty twenty bond. And I think that needs to be heard loud and clear. So thank you for your time, Madam President.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Someone passed away recently. His name's Dean LaMaire. He wasn't from Nashua, but he had a great impact on the people of Nashua. He was a certified recovery sport worker who worked here in the city at Harper Care and various other recovery agencies and helped revive, get off the ground with specialized support and training. Unfortunately, he passed away suddenly recently, and I wanted to express my condolences to his family and all of his colleagues that he's worked with throughout the greater Nashua community. In addition to that, even though it is an election year, it's also very impressive to keep a budget at half of inflation, regardless of what year it is, given what's going on in the national economy. So kudos to everyone in the city government, including the mayor's office, for managing to do such an astonishing thing, given the economics of the, of the nation. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking Alderman Cleese for not attempting to seize more territory. When she redistricts, some of my favorite streets are gone. And I would also like to point out, as it was commented at the beginning, that the mayor is not solely responsible, although certainly his leadership helped a lot for us being able to address the tax needs of the citizens. And not everybody on this board is actually running for reelection. Several of our at-large Aldermen aren't, and several of our local Aldermen are running unopposed, so we don't have to do everything for political purposes. I don't think some of us did. I think some of us just wanted to, as the mayor said, make things square after more circumstances that we couldn't do much about were imposed on us last year and in order to further our city's economic growth following the pandemic. I know we're a little tired of hearing about the pandemic, but other communities are still very much recovering from it. And we are seeing greater degrees of economic development, you know, recently than we have in many years. And to that end, I'd like to welcome several of the new restaurants that are announcing that they're opening on Main Street, including Coffee and Kindness and including Pearl. And of course, Soul Sisters, which I'm really excited about personally. I wanted to congratulate Paige Beauchemin, I'm hoping I pronounced that right, my French is a little weak lately, for her performance in the local primary for Ward Four. We had to have a special election because we had two state representatives that were ultimately unable to perform their duties. So Mark Pumandon was our first elected representative. Paige had a very good showing. I noticed in the union leader that they gave it to David Narconis, who did manage to beat his, his primary opponent. It is only the primary, so I don't know if congratulations are quite in order for anybody yet. But Paige managed to urge or to earn more votes than the people who are actually in a primary combined. So I think that's worth it. I'm very impressed with her as a candidate, and I'm glad she's stepping forward. She's got a lot of support, especially from her neighbors. I wanted to thank everybody who came out to support Employment Connect, particularly the employers. The city did a great job of recruiting as well. It was a great presentation. But the businesses that we engaged in the First Impressions Program, in the past, it's been called Suit Yourself and Dress to Impress. And basically, it's a community effort to make sure that we have resources on hand for people attending the job fair that may not have access to resources of their own at the same quality, so that they can best reflect and put their best foot forward. So a lot of the restaurants downtown, a lot of the businesses downtown, were collecting new and good-conditioned interview clothes. And we got some really, really nice stuff, very, very generous donations. And we were able to do a great job of setting up in the library a job preparation pantry so that they could meet the, people applying for jobs could meet the employers and have that conversation, which is important for employment, but make a good impression and not be restricted by their economic access to nice ties or haircuts or that kind of stuff. We were able to do with donations most of that. So it was a great event. The library was a great host. We had a lot of support from the city and a lot of great participating organizations. That is organized by the Employment Subcommittee of the Greater Nashville Continuum of Care. I would recommend to all Aldermen that you attend a GNCOC meeting in the near future if you're able because they're extremely informative. It's the opportunity to learn about what is exactly going on with all the nonprofit organizations that are focused on housing and housing stabilization. And this is going to become increasingly important as cold weather advances and more and more of your constituents ask you, where should I go for this? How do I do this? How do I, what do I do if I'm homeless? These are questions that the GNCOC is a collaborative meant to answer, and they do a great job with it. They're the first Wednesday of the month. This month, it will be October sixth, tomorrow? First Monday of the month usually. And it's October sixth at nine A. M. Alderman Cleese attends regularly as well, and I've seen Alderman Timmons there. So I definitely would invite you all to come, participate, find out what is going on in the city and how you can best help people when they ask, when they come in your direction. And then thankfully, finally, I'd like to thank all of the hard work that DPW has managed, that Board of Public Works has done to pave Main Street and CSX as well for fixing the railroads. I don't have to do my little Evel Knievel on my Segway and try to leap over it. Now I can just drive like a normal person. So definitely much appreciated. And I know it's only halfway done, so I want to thank the people of Nashua for putting up with the inconveniences, the businesses that are still open and still functioning would definitely love a little bit more love, and all of their patrons for their support. Thank you.
Alderman Jerry.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, here we are in the beginnings of autumn, and with that comes the resurgence of COVID. So my wife and I got our COVID vaccines this weekend. You know, there's a new variant, and the new vacs, the current edition of the vaccine is designed to combat that. So I encourage everyone to get their COVID vaccine. And then, you know, the flu, flu vaccines are also available, and you should get those as well. And if you're over sixty-five, you ought to talk to your healthcare provider about this RSV vaccine as well. Thank you.
Welcome. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So I wanted to address some of the things that were brought up in, in public comment. And it, it's funny to me because an election year was, was mentioned. And, and these things always, always make me laugh when certain things are said because you often find yourself hearing contradictory things during election years. And it depends on how things are going, right? So in, Nashua has been continually ranked as one of the best-run cities in the country. We have a triple-A bond rating. We get a number of awards for, for various things. And one of the ways that we, that we do that is by saving money. And when I say saving money, all of the accounts that were mentioned where, you know, there's, quote, millions of dollars set aside, well, yeah. That's, that's how we're able to maintain some of these, these awards, these, the bond ratings that we have. That's how we're able to make sure that the tax rate is low. Because when times are good, we put money aside. And when times are difficult and we need to give back to the taxpayer, like this year, we give a big surplus of eight million dollars back so that the taxpayer doesn't pay as much. That is fiscal responsibility at its best, not politics at its worst. And so the, the idea that, you know, there's some nefarious things going on, just ask yourself as a citizen, if somebody comes up to you and says, I have proof of all of these accounts that have all this money and it's nefarious and whatnot, ask yourself the question, how did they get that information? Well, they got the information because it's public, it's knowledge, it's above board. It's why it's there. That's how they're able to access. If we were doing stuff that was shady, if the mayor was doing things under the table, there would be nobody in the public who would be able to come forward and say, aha, I found this. No, you'd have to be like in the FBI, or you would have to have like the state police backing you up. These are all public documents. These are all things that are done above board. So as a taxpayer and as a citizen, when you see people saying things like that, take a second, take a deep breath, and think about it. It's common sense. You do not have a triple-A bond rating. You do not have this city being ranked as one of the best-run with shady things going on in, in the background. It just wouldn't happen. I am very confident of the team that we have here in the treasurer's office running the, our financials. I think they do a fantastic job. And I think that, you know, I think that the political season brings out some funny things. If, if, if it had been that we were spending too much money, they would say we didn't save enough, right? But now we're doing a good job, so we're saving too much. It's just ironic. So just keep that in mind, folks, when you're, when you're out there and you're hearing things. Some, some of the things that you hear is a little, might be a little fantastical. So, thank you.
Alderman Kelly, you're all set? Okay, Alderman Camo.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two things real quick. Early Sunday morning, there was a pretty substantial house fire on West Holler Street. Maybe you noticed that it required the road to be shut down for several hours. I first wanted to thank Nashua Fire Rescue for an amazing job, as always, making sure that it didn't spread into adjacent homes. There were a number of people that have been displaced by the fire, and I'm told that they are being assisted by the New England chapter of the American Red Cross. So if anybody's interested in supporting them or making any donations, they can reach out to the American Red Cross. And the second thing is, I'm just, I'm appalled that the mayor forgot to mention Sandy Pond. We also cut a ribbon at Sandy Pond, although it was not nearly as well-attended, I believe. Aside from the park staff, it was just the mayor and myself. But we did walk out onto the dock, and we can assure you that it's not going to sink. But so that's a great amenity for that neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, two quick things in regards to the wall. Three years ago, I went to Senator LeVake, and we tried to do something about that wall. And the place you'd put the wall is totally on state land. It's totally up to the state. The city can't do anything, is not allowed to do anything by the state. So Alderman O'Brien's input was very good. That's where you have to go to get something done for that wall. The other thing is, we have, of course, several school building projects going on, but the Franklin Street School is completely done, ahead of schedule and under budget. So that's, that's great. And we have a few more invoices to pay, so we don't have the exact number yet, but it is under budget. And, and I just got the report from Harvey on all the school projects. And I know the Joint Special gets it, but I'm going to send it out to all the Aldermen so you can see the work that's being done on all of the school projects.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. This past weekend, we had Wheels and Wings at the Nashua Airport. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. I was away at a wedding, also why I wasn't here last night at the public hearing, but I'm here tonight, so that's positive. Over thirty-five hundred people attended, donating food, canned goods to end sixty-eight hours of hunger. Fantastic organization. And then this coming weekend, the fun doesn't stop in Ward One. We have Apple Fest. I will be there. September thirtieth through October I will be there, September 30th through October 1st. That's 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Sullivan Farm on Coburn Ave. Let's keep the speed down on Coburn Ave, everybody. I got a lot of complaints recently about it. There will be enough apple crisp, I'll make sure of it. But let's just be careful and have a great event. Thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank everyone who showed up for the 45th celebration of the Nashua Senior Center. It's hard to believe that it's 45 years. And also to remind you that the Senior Center is self-sufficient, other than they pay rent for the use of the building that the city put up for them. But I think it was great, and I appreciated all the aldermen and the mayor who got us the proclamation, and I know that the staff and the board of directors really appreciate everything you do for them. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Before this meeting, I had a lovely conversation with Attorney Bolton about, I wasn't going to say anything, but I, breaking my promise to you, attorney. So, a couple of things. So, I, I was going to, to bring up Sandy Pond, even though I wasn't able to attend, but because I've spent some time there cleaning it up with every source this year, I saw the dock, and it is, it is a really nice dock, and I'm glad that we were able to put that in. It's, you know, as we go further in the city, we keep doing nice things for the city by putting fixes to these parks, whether it was St. Andrews Park, or Sandy Pond, or Atherton that's coming up soon. And I think, you know, it's a credit to the Parks and Recreation Department for all the work that they, they do there. And secondly, you know, to say that, you know, from the public comment, I'm going to chime in on that too, to say that it's a campaign stunt, or a campaign event, or reelection year, is a disservice to the people that work in City Hall that are trying to get that budget down, because they're the ones working to get it down at the end of the day, and they're the ones who have to decide what's more important for the city this year compared to last year, compared to next year. When it comes to escrows, I'm, I'm still waiting for us to have that topic tonight because it wasn't on the agenda. But as far as escrows go, last year, for instance, we had escrows go towards hiring two policemen. It wasn't a, that, that's not a pet project, unless it's the pet project of the Police Department, right? It's to keep our city safe. Surf was also on there. If we get to a habit of not paying for, or not saving money in these escrow accounts to fund, whether it's infrastructure or whether it's vehicles, we're going to come to a point where it's going to go back to the old days where we have to put rubber bands on plows to get the streets plowed. We have to save money. We have to put it somewhere, and the escrow is the best place because it can't be touched for just about anything except for what it's there for. And, you know, this year, for instance, we had to buy a couple of fire trucks that weren't coming up this year, but to save money, we had to buy them this year, right? Also, it takes longer to get them now. So, it's, it's critical that we, we, there's so many pieces of this stuff. And when people go out and they talk about it being a campaign year and an election year, well, we all signed off on the budget this year, every single one of us. I mean, we must, thought it was a good enough budget. There really wasn't a lot of complaining or a lot of fighting on it. Went through pretty swift. I went to most budgets, or I watched them, and I thought those meetings were, were pretty good overall. They, they didn't last as long as they did the year before. So, I mean, I think at the end of the day, we did pass a good bud, pass a good budget, and the city made a good budget, and I think it'll set us up for years to follow, and we can save money this year for the taxpayers. So, I don't see why that's a negative, but, you know, if anybody in this horseshoe thinks that, I'd love to, love to hear why, what the, the person said out there is true, because I, I don't think it is. And as far as the, the PAC stuff, that keeps coming out and over and over and over again, Nashville Center for the Arts stuff, it's wrong. It's, it's absolutely incorrect. It can't be proven that it's incorrect. Alderman Klee and Alderman Clemmons have already spoke to that multiple times, so thank you.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. At the last board meeting, I misspoke regarding the $1 million that the speaker was costing the city. My intentions was to say that they are asking the city for $2 million in ongoing lawsuit against the taxpayers. My passion for the city and its employee welfare when attack led me to misspeak. However, in my opinion, for transparency purposes, the citizens of the city should know when a lawsuit had been filed, who filed it, and how much money does this citizen want to get from taxpayers. My passion was not to misspeak about it, but to defend the onslaught of attacking our city employees. I really can't stand that. I don't like negativity, and I try not to be negative, but when certain people come in here, that's what I hear. It's never, there's no winner. It's just no winning. So, no matter what you say, good, bad, or indifferent, it's going to always be the opposite. So, thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I don't have to say.
Okay, Mayor.
I did want to answer a couple of things. First, it's impossible to answer all of the misstatements, all the false facts that the speaker at the beginning and at the end of the meeting has made. But one, if there was the assertion, the allegation, the implication that the city is not audited, totally, totally false. The city is audited. For 2022, we have a clean audit, as usual, and if anyone got the impression that we are not audited, that is totally false. Of course, as you've already heard, we have a AAA bond rating, and of course, we could never get that if we weren't audited. The other thing is this, this secret lease. Now, as Alderman Clemmons already mentioned, if the lease were secret, the speaker wouldn't have it. She got it because it's not a secret. But what this is, is it's the evolution of other false allegations. So, the, originally, the allegation was that we spent $7 million, $9 million, $16 million more than was authorized, the $21 million that was authorized for the Performing Arts Center. Of course, that's, those allegations were obviously false and ridiculous and would be impossible. You think the CFO and the Finance Department are going to write checks for millions of dollars that they're not authorized to do? So, we had to rebut that false allegation over and over and over and over again. And finally, I think that has been maybe, well, it was, it was on the internet today, but I think it's been somewhat dropped in the public arena. But now that's morphed into there was a secret lease. And the other complaint is the tax increase is too low. But if it were 6%, it would be that it was too high. And if it was 4%, it's too high. If it's 2%, it's too low. I think people, as you've already heard, should be careful about all of these election year allegations. That's the one thing I do agree with the speaker. Yes, it is an election year, and I think those two statements make that very obvious. But back to the beginning, the city is audited. Every year, we always get a clean audit, and the Finance Department runs a very clean operation. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Someone of a busy evening tomorrow night for the Committee of Infrastructure. At 6:00 PM here in the Aldomatic Chamber, will be a joint meeting of the Infrastructure and the Board of Public Works. We're basically had some success with, of course, the new building at the landfill. We're starting to wrap it up. Things are looking good, so we're coming to the end conclusion, and that's what the 6:00 PM meeting is about. Which leads us next into is the Committee of Infrastructure. Later at 7:00 PM, we'll convene again, and this will be a regular infrastructure meeting. There is really nothing officially on the docket, so I think we have the wonderful opportunity to discuss some things that are pending out there. Some of them are an update on the Riverfront Project, and specifically, an update on what's going under the construction over the next year. Number two, an updated reversal of Water Street and West Pearl Street, and Wal, and the Walnut Street Oval, straightening it out, straightening out. And then also, the continuing to design to bring passenger rail, something that I would love to see here to New Hampshire. So, all those items will be discussed with a presentation by Director Cummings, or Administrative Assistant Cummings, and bring us up to speed. And so, please turn in, get to see what your infrastructure committee's got up our sleeves. Nothing hidden there, folks.
Any other committee announcements? Alderman Dow.
Alderman O'Brien, did you want to mention something that's going on Sunday?
Oh. Patriots came.
The fire and...
Oh, yes, thank you, if I may take personal preference. Every single year at this particular time, Nashua Fire Rescue honors members of the department who have passed on, and also specifically, the 14 names of the firefighters who have given their lives on the line of duty. This is a, a presentation, or I don't want to say celebration, because it is a solemn occasion, but it occurs at the monument at Manchester and Conca Street. In case people don't know, that's one of the original firebells that was struck to wake the horses up and, and the firemen up, but it is now incorporated as part of the memorial. So, if you want to come down, everybody is welcomed, and it'll, I think it's at...
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. So, I'll be giving the invocation, so I'll bless you all if you want to come down. Thank you.
Alderman Dow? Did you have something? Oh, that's all you had. Alderwoman Timmons.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow's the Cultural Connection Committee. It's going to be held at 12 o'clock in person here on the third floor, that's the auditorium at the City Hall. We have a guest speaker, Dan Haley, who's going to be, who's going to offer information regarding voting. And he's the person you need to talk to when it comes to voting, and how to register, and what you need to do. I think this is going to be a worthwhile committee meeting, and I look forward to working with Mr. Haley.
So, we have no need for a non-public. Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Madam President, you do. I would like to make the motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn.
And it would have to be by roll call, Madam President.
Would the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Kamau.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
15 yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:34 PM. Thank you, everyone.